Meetings have come to order. This is the November 2 meeting of the Planning Board for the town of Berwick. Introducing members.
Oh, we pledge allegiance first.
Pledge allegiance first. It's my first time, folks. Bear with me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Starting with my left, Jerry Grayville.
Don Gennarelli.
Don Gennarelli. I'm Paul Amatucci, the temporary. We have Rick Rains here, and we have Les Bogwell. So with that, we're going to start today. We have a public meeting.
Hearing.
Public hearing. Primary plan, conditional use, Malloy Pond, major subdivision, School Street, and Heritage Drive. ATAR Engineering, do you want to give us a little synopsis before the public hearing?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Temporary Chair.
Thank you.
For the record, Mike Sudak, ATAR Engineering, here on behalf of SW Solar Incorporated. Thank you for having me. Yes, as Mr. Chair said, we're here for our public hearing this evening. We were before you at the beginning of last month, our preliminary completeness determination. Nothing has changed since then, but for the sake of overview for the public hearing, this is an overall 67-acre parcel. We're focused on 10 acres of it along the frontage of Heritage Drive, proposing a six-lot subdivision, conventional lots, all frontage lots, private utilities out here, so individual septic and water and drilled wells for each. Really, that's it. Again, frontage lots, no infrastructure, no roads to speak of. Yeah, that's really all I have for an overview. Be happy to entertain any questions.
We're now starting the public hearing portion of this. So if there are any members of the public who would like to weigh in, and please step to the mic, you'll have three minutes to start, and then should we need other comments or you need other comments, you can go back and have two more minutes. So if there are any members of the public who'd like to be heard, please state your name and your address.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Pat Bedard. I represent Steve Clement, who is the owner of, essentially, he has a stormwater management permit. I think I've sent a bunch of letters in. He's developed the abutting property, which is Heritage Estates. He owns the entire, or he has owned the entire four phases of Heritage Estates, and this butts up against it. I want to make sure I'm here. Steve couldn't be here tonight because he's traveling and he's out of state. But I wanted, he wanted me to be here to express his concerns about the project. I've submitted a letter to Michael LaRue, the chairman, who was chairman at the time, and I want to make sure the board has it. And I'm going to briefly summarize it, but I think I've sent it to Code, I've sent it to the planning office as well. I can hand the packet to everybody now if you'd like, or it may be in the...
They have received it in the past.
Okay.
So they have received.
Okay.
My pen died, sorry.
That's okay. I'm happy to, I'm happy to hand it out again if anybody wants, but I don't want to over paper anybody seeing this. So you understand what's going on here and the concerns that Mr. Clement had. Just to be clear, Heritage Drive is...
No, 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 no. Behind the podium.
Yeah, you have to stay behind the podium. There is a pointer.
Stay behind the podium. Okay.
You can use a nice little laser pointer if you would like, or you can use this little thing.
Okay, thank you. Probably use this because technology's not great. So Heritage Drive, and that was originally constructed by Steve Clement when he did all four phases of the subdivision, and these plans are in the packet I've submitted. This is Phase 1 of Phase of Heritage Estates, and then it went backwards. What happened was when Steve Clement and Clement Forest Products Services got approvals for later phases in this subdivision, he needed DEP approval for this. He had basically a site development plan. He needed approvals. They need to look at the roads. They need to make sure the stormwater management, the drainage and things work properly. So when that happened, he's gotten all approvals multiple times from DEP for Phases 1 and 2, which include this area, then for Phase 3 off this chart, and for Phase 4, which he's still building houses in Phase 4. He turned the road over through this area to the town of Berwick. When he got the approval from DEP, Steve and his company remain responsible for the entire road, the entire stormwater management, everything to do with the road was never turned over to the town of Berwick. The town of Brook owns the road. They may maintain the gravel, I'm sorry, the tarred surface, but they don't maintain the stormwater management. Steve Clement or his company is still on the hook for that. That's led to the problem that he has with his plan and what's going on here, and I think it's been vocalized by Steve before. Probably you've heard this before, and I think the town planner in Code has heard it as well. We had a meeting about three or four weeks ago, I think it was Allison with DEP, and the concern is it changes his stormwater management plan and it affects what he was approved for. Essentially, if you looked at this and you went backwards and looked at it from a larger overview, this is essentially going to look like another phase of Heritage Estates. It's not, but that's what it's going to look like. It's going to tuck into that subdivision, but it was never part of that. So the DEP, when they approved his plans, and again, I've submitted all this and I'm happy to show it to you again, when they approved it, they did it based on the plans that Steve Clement gave them. The plans he gave them never showed curb cuts and culverts going from lots over here. So he would have needed to show that. If he had ever gone to DEP and said, "Listen, I want a Phase 5 or 6 of Heritage Estates", he didn't need to get this approved by DEP. It would have tied into his subdivision. It's essentially what's happening now. He's never gotten that approval. The plans, the approvals Steve has and Clement has, Clement Forest Products has, is for whatever plans they submitted. So when the drainage is done and the drainage ponds are done and all this work is done, it shows the water, it's coming out, and basically it heads out to School Street or Route 9, and I mentioned that in one of my letters, and then it, and it heads towards, I think there's a brook out here or a river. So what happens here is these are, basically, they're swales here. I mean, I haven't been there, but I believe they may not be dramatic, but they're swales. They're meant to show, allow drainage to go through. When you cut trees and you take away areas that would absorb the water, when you change the slope of the land, when you do driveways here, when you put culverts in, and now you have an area that's, that, you know, is built up with a driveway going in here, you've created more surface. I don't know if there'll be driveways that have tar, they're impervious or not, whether they'll be able to accept water, but you're going to run water in different directions than Steve's plan showed. We brought that up to DEP when we had a meeting. Allison and someone else from DEP was there, it was in my office, it was by Zoom, and Steve was there as well. That was the concern. The conundrum for DEP, they said, first of all, we don't have an application from this person here to change anything, to amend this plan, this site location development plan for the entire Heritage Estates. We don't have a plan in front of us to look at or approve. They said that was about three or four weeks ago. Nothing's been submitted. Their concern was that Steve Clement's company was still on the hook for maintaining all this. And I think that's DEP's conundrum. They said, "Yeah, you're still on the hook for that, but yes, you've got a new development who's going to actually hook into that and change what's being maintained there." Now Allison suggested possibilities. He said, "You know, I'll give you a possibility to resolve this. Maybe you'll make them responsible for maintaining this area. Maybe the town will." She threw out possibilities, but they weren't acceptable to us because basically all four phases, and we've given you documentation previously, I can give it to you again tonight, all four phases tie in to Phase 1. They all tie in together, and if you change this, you're changing all of them. Now, you can have a debate. We've got an engineer, it's a letter from our engineer at Alters Engineering, I think it's Eric Sari, who said that this does change the plan, and Steve's still on the hook for this, and it changes what the DEP approved. You can have a debate about how much it changes it. Okay? You could say, "Well, it's a, it's minimal changes," or, you know, "Stormwater calculations may not be a big deal anymore," but it does change what's going on here. It hooks other lots into four phases of Heritage Estates. It changes what was approved by DEP. We brought that to their attention. We didn't get a real straight answer. "Well, we're going to talk to the applicant from Malloy," I think I pronounced it correctly, "Malloy Brook. We'll see what we can work out." But they say we don't have any application in front of us. Our position has been, and I've stated this repeatedly, and we stated again to DEP, that you can't amend Steve Clement's permit. We've given you evidence that it's his permit with DEP. He's the one to amend it. Now normally, you can amend a permit if it goes with the land you buy. So Steve and I have talked about this. We acknowledge it. So let's say I get a permit for the town of Berwick for a piece of land I own. I then sell it to somebody on the board. I no longer own that permit, right? It goes with the land. It goes with the person who owns the land. We all understand that that's the way it's going to work. Problem here is Berwick may own this land, but Berwick didn't take responsibility for the stormwater permit. And the other problem is this permit is tied into three other phases. They're all hooked together. So it's not like a single lot where you get a building permit, you sell the lot, and the lot and the building permit go together. This one is not so easy. You can't peel it apart because all four phases, including this Phase 1 and 2, are all part of the same permit with DEP. That's creating the problem. You can't really, you know, what do you do? Create a new permit where you chop off part of it and say, "Berwick has the responsibility," or "The owners of this subdivision have the responsibility." We don't know how to do that, and we don't believe DEP can do that. We're opposing making these changes. I understand what I'm saying tonight isn't directly a Berwick Planning Board issue. You can say, "Well, we do the ordinance for the town of Berwick. We don't have anything to do with DEP." That's acknowledged. I'm here on this issue. I believe I'm not here on any other issues under the zoning. I do believe, though, the zoning in Berwick does pick up this issue, and I think I had it in front of me earlier. Hopefully, I won't have trouble finding it. But there's an ordinance or a section in the ordinance that talks about, let me see if it's here. It talks about making sure there's approvals before the Planning Board in Berwick gives its approval. I'm quoting now the parts of the subdivision regulations in the town, and I'm going, I believe this is a major subdivision. I think I'm right about that. I looked at the application. So if I go into 8.1, under procedure, it goes under C, it says, "Prior to submittal of a final plan application, the following approvals shall be obtained in writing where applicable." And then it says, "Main Department of Environmental Protection under the Site Location Development Act." We're under the Site Location of Development Act. They may say, "Well, this is too small to be part of that." No, it's not because it's hooking into this road. This road, you will see in the material I've delivered, and I can deliver it again if you want to see it. This is all part of the Site Location Development Act for the four phases of Heritage Estates. This road has a Site Location Development Act permit. It has permits for Phases 1 and 2, according to the registry, which I've provided. It has permits for Phase 3, Phase 4. They're all hooked together. So these permits, when you tie into this, you're essentially, what they're trying to do without actually doing it is they're amending a site location development permit owned by my client, who doesn't want it amended. What I'm saying to the board is, I know this isn't a Berwick zoning or Berwick planning issue, but it is, under your major subdivision ordinance, something that I think you should pause and not approve this and say, "The applicant, you need to resolve this first with the DEP." I'll acknowledge, the DEP wasn't clear how they were going to resolve this. They threw out some ideas like, "Maybe Berwick will take this over. Maybe Malloy Brook will." Geez, this is a bit of a conundrum to us. You know, what are we going to do here? They have their own ideas, and I acknowledge it's their jurisdiction. It's going to be their ultimate call. We may have a fight with them, and we may disagree with them. But ultimately, this issue is before the board in one sense, and that's what I quoted here, 8.1C1. This board should step back, not approve this until DEP has resolved this issue because we've given you enough documents, I think, to show that this is affecting Steve Clement's permits. He's responsible for all of this stormwater management. Brook never took it over. He takes care of it. He ditches the swales. He takes care of the whole thing. This is going to change that. That has to be resolved. DEP has to resolve it. And I think I've quoted a number of times, DEP puts in their standard conditions for site location development permits or anything else, the last page, standard stuff, they'll say, "Listen, if you change anything on the plans you submitted to us, you've got to come back to us." Now, that makes perfect sense, right? If you don't follow them precisely. And this, you can debate whether this is a big change or a little change, right? That's DEP's debate here, but this changes it. Steve Clement never presented plans showing these lots would use this road and come into here. That was never part of what he presented. So the plan has now been changed to hook into his road, his site water, his site location development permit. When that's done, it needs to be before the, before the DEP. That's what we're asking that the board do. That's our issue for tonight, and I wanted to make that clear. I think it should be not acted on until DEP has heard this, ruled, and it's final.
I got copies of that.
Yes, thank you.
We have copies of that. Might as well pass them out.
Yeah, if you guys did receive copies of them, so they'll be second.
Thank you.
Actually, you know what? You two, I don't think were on the board.
No. Actually, also, could you, could you reread that 8.1 ordinance that you ordered them to go, please?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
So I pulled it up the Internet. Hopefully, it's still good. I always worry about these things. But what I got was 8.1, under Article 8, 8.1C, and it says, "Prior to the submittal of the final plan application," which probably has been submitted, "the following approvals shall be obtained in writing where applicable." And then it says, "Main Department of Environmental Protection under the Site Location of Development Act," which is a permit Steve has that covers heritage. There's also others. There's a bunch of others, like DHS, Army Corps of Engineers, et cetera. It says, "Main Department of Environmental Protection under Natural Resources Protection if stormwater management permit or wastewater discharge license is needed." My understanding is when you get big enough, the Site Location Development Act covers stormwater as well, and it just encompasses the whole thing. So if it's smaller subdivision, you just need a stormwater management plan. But what we're saying is there needs a Site Location Development Act permit. You need to amend this, or you need to do something. We don't think they can amend it, but that's a battle we'll have with the DEP about how that works. But this is new, and it's in the packet of, I've given you, I'm showing you Steve's plans for Phase 1 and 2. They don't show this abutting property coming into this road, and that's our...
So I would ask, and, you know, this is just a question to ask. I haven't done a lot of research on this. I wasn't on the board originally when this came up. You know, on the one hand, you say that this permit does not apply to this land and that they can't use it. And then on the other hand, you read 8.1C that says they have to amend the stormwater plan. So it's kind of like you're saying this stormwater plan doesn't apply to this land, but we want them to apply it to the land, and we're not going to let them.
Mr. Chair, if I may, may...
Chair.
So for the benefit of the developer and Mr. Clement's attorney, Mr. Bedard, as well as the board, this has been addressed a couple of times in regards to what the board's duties are. That is why we pushed for DEP to give us something in writing. So under the town regulations, the Planning Board is required to follow the ordinances, determine whether or not this plan meets the ordinances, and then the advice that was going to be given by myself, Southern Main Planning, were to be the same as we've done on multiple other projects, which is that if the board decides that this meets all the means of approval needed for the town of Berwick, to put a condition upon it that there would be absolutely no building permits, driveway permits, any permits issued until I am presented with that first permit application with a DEP approval.
I agree with you, and I think we should do, we should look at doing that, but I think right now, we're going to address it again in old business. So let's move on with more public, public comment.
Thank you, Chairman.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Should I answer that question or just step back?
No. Yeah, you can, you can answer it, just unless you're not getting another chance.
The only analogy I'd make is this. If Steve Clement owned this at the time he developed Heritage Estates, he would have needed to have shown these lots, and he would have needed to have shown them coming into this road. In other words, if he had a plan and he presented it and said, "This is my subdivision. Here are the roads, and here's what's connecting. Here are the culverts. Here's where the drainage is going to go and all this down here." If he's going to develop these, he's got to show that. And as soon as he, anybody, and it's not him now, it's in a butter, ties into this development essentially and sends water and resources in places it wasn't, they need, they need to show that on this plan because this plan assumes no one else is tying in here. It assumes no one else is sending curb cuts and changing any of this. This is going to change. See, you can't get to, you can't get to Heritage without going into the land now.
I get it. I was on the sidewalk, and I don't remember seeing curbs. So I don't think that there's curb cuts, but, but I get your point, and I do understand that, you know, when you take trees off a lot, trees create a natural filter bed. So it does create more runoff when you take the trees down, and that's something we're all concerned about. I'm just, you know, we'll, we'll address this for sure later, but I just, for me, it's like you're saying, if it was Steve Clement, it would fall under this permit, but it's not, so it doesn't.
He wouldn't. He'd need to amend it. He'd need permission from DEP. He couldn't do this.
If it was Steve Clement.
If he owned this, he'd need, he'd need to amend the permit. We're saying, we don't believe they can amend his permit. Only he can, but DEP will have to decide that.
Correct.
But somebody's got to amend it. Somebody's got to deal with that. DEP was a little bit scratching their heads. They weren't necessarily agreeing with us, but there's a bit of a conundrum, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you.
Any more public, public comments in the public hearing?
Hi, Maureen Nikitas, 28 Heritage Drive. I was not planning on speaking, but no one else is here for my development, so I guess I'll...
Maureen, how do you spell your last name?
N-I-K-I-T-K-S.
Okay, and that was 28, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
So, no, that's okay. I don't really want to speak. I have nothing prepared, but I've been following this. I live there. I'm not speaking to any of that. I'm just assuming if it goes through, I'm speaking to that. At the sidewalk, I met with Mr. Hill. Is he the one who is the developer? I think, the guy who...
The owner, yes.
From Western Mass, the owner.
Yep.
And he talked to me and a couple other residents of Heritage. And he was really nice, and he said, "If he builds, he'll be willing to kind of make it look like how we would like it to look." That's one concern. I mean, we don't really want it to happen, honestly, because we walk down there and it's beautiful and it's nice how it is, but whatever, it's, that's fine. But he said he would be willing to make it look like the rest of the development. Steve Clement has made the development gorgeous. He is creative with all of his lots and driveways and the trees. He doesn't chop off all the trees. He makes it look really nice and different every, it's not cookie cutter. So that would be one thing that I think, excuse me, I and other people who live there would like, that it, they look nice, that it doesn't bring down our values in our development, even though a lot of, like, my house is 20 years old, and a lot of them are around that age. But just to keep it uniform, so it looks like it belongs, doesn't look silly. The six driveways, I know they ditched number 7, but the six driveways, I mean, that's going to look a little funny, so maybe he could come up with a way to make it look nice. Leave trees like all the, maybe he could look around the rest of the development and say, "Oh, I want it, you know, just leave trees, just make it look nice." I know I'm not speaking with any formal terms that don't have any. What was, oh, that's the other thing, and then I'll sit down. The homeowners association, we pay. So Phase 1 is the first four houses on that street that you drive in, and on the right, four houses. They don't, I don't know what happened, but they don't have to pay into the homeowners association. But we, the rest of us in Phases 2, 3, and 4, we pay every month, every year, whatever. We pay a bunch of things. But we pay to maintain all those swales and culverts, and we pay insurance in case someone gets hurt in the culvert. We pay taxes. We have an accountant that has to do our taxes because we're a something, I don't know. We have to file. Anyway, we pay, so I don't know if they're going to put like driveways and everything through there, if now we shouldn't have to take care of that anymore because that costs a lot of money to get someone to do the, all the mowing and everything like that. I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public hearing comments from anyone? We'll close the public hearing at three minutes before 7:00. Are there any general public comments, not on a specific item that will be heard today or is on our agenda, but, but a general public comment on anything of interest in this town or to planning?
I'm not public, but I wanted to let you all know that the reason I keep getting up and running in there is Zoom is cutting in and out on audio, so we're trying to keep Hannah connected and listening. So I apologize if it's been disruptive to the board or any of the speakers thus far. Just trying to keep the planners in the loop.
Good idea. Thank you. No public comment? We'll close. Public comments. Approval of minutes. We have a stack of approval of minutes.
We have the right people.
Not sure that we have the ability today because of who we have here and the absences that we've had, that we could get any of these times, that we had a quorum of four that are sitting here today to vote on them. What do you, what do you think?
We've got exactly four of you from the September 7 meeting.
Okay. The four that are sitting here.
One, two, three, four. Les was not there.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion that the September 7 meeting minutes are approved.
Make a motion that we approve those?
Have a second. All those in favor?
I don't think I vote on that right now.
You aren't there.
Okay, so wait, Jerry made the motion, Don seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
About September 21st?
September 21st, the only four that were here were Mike, Paul, Rick, and Les. And so we got no Mike, so we've got nothing.
October 5th?
Mike, Don, Les, Rick, and Jerry. I'm really disappointed we don't have a Tom.
Nope.
I'm sorry. It's been a long day.
So we did have four.
Jerry, Rick, Les, and Don.
Yeah.
Nope.
So we will entertain a motion that the October 5 minutes, 2023, be voted on.
Okay, so Don made a motion?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Okay.
Motion carries.
Whoops.
And then we have the 19th.
Mike, Les, Jerry, and Phil, so no, nope. Hey, we're halfway there.
Okay, so, see you next time.
Okay.
All right. So then, moving right along, let's get on to old business. Old business, preliminary plan for Malloy Brook, major subdivision, School Street, and Heritage Drive. We have ATAR Engineering again. So just basically, if you want to address some of the issues that you heard based on the, the public hearing, would like to have your take on some of this.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, for the record, Mike Sudak, ATAR Engineering. And yeah, happy to go through those. I'll go in the order in which they're received, beginning with Mr. Bedard. So first comment I have here is the notion, and again, I'd be happy to recommend your your engineer, I believe I was here at the last meeting when, uh, Mr. Clement contracted him, um, the notion that what we are proposing here ties into all four phases of the development. It absolutely does not. There is a BMP down here at the corner within the Heritage Drive right of way. That is a detention pond. I promise you, if that was in receipt of all four phases of the development, that would be an underdrained soil filter or some measure that provides treatment in addition to detention. We are not, yeah, just, that was factually incorrect, so just wanted to clarify that. The other big item, um, we are here this evening for preliminary approval. The section in the ordinance that Mr. Bedard quoted is absolutely correct. That is for final application. That is not what we're here for this evening. I completely agree with him that the DEP needs to be in some further state than it is. So that is not what I'm here requesting. I completely agree with everything he stated. And just, just to that effect, um, I had a pre-application meeting, what day is today? Today's Thursday. Tuesday morning with Allison Saroy and April Steer, the regional director and, um, one of the permitting specialists respectively for Region One for the DEP, um, regarding the onsite permitting for this project. If you, those of you that were on the board in 2021 recall, there is an existing stormwater management law permit in hand, um, same developer for the solar farm that was approved in the back of the property. There will be an amendment to that that is required as part of the onsite improvements that are done here regarding the proposed driveways and driveway culverts that would need to be installed in the roadside swale within the Heritage Drive right of way. I want to declare, I've declared this before, I'll, I'll put it into record again, this parcel and that dri, that driveway and all of the stormwater management elements therein are completely hydraulically separate. The analysis points for this parcel are the two culverted crossings that leave the property, go beneath School Street, are culverted south. The comment on whether or not there would be impacts through to the existing site location and development permit for the Heritage Estates Association project, um, from those driveways and the driveway culverts in that existing vegetated swale, that's something for the state to decide. The position they've given my client right now is that it is not something that need, requires an amendment to that slowdown. That could change as we get further into the process. If it does, we'll need to continue the process with the state as is required by your ordinance. That's all I have to say on the matter. You know, I, I am required to complete my due diligence on that. I'm not trying to sweep anything under the rug here.
I, I do remember that when we did a sidewalk back there, there was, this discussion came up about, uh, the HOA paying dues for, uh, for drainage. And there was some comment, it could have been careless comment, but it was comment, that was made during that time that, uh, perhaps that could be a joint effort of both the new, uh, development as well as with the existing homeowners association.
Jumping the gun here a little bit, that was Ms. Maureen's comment. I was going to get to that.
All right.
But, um, if you, if you want to continue with that, we can.
Sure. So, so yeah, I, I just was wondering, because it, it all seems to kind of wrap, wrap arms around each other in this conversation. So I was just wondering if, uh, if that was part of it. So go ahead and let us know what.
Yeah, so, um.
Can I, before we just move on to that, I want to, I want to talk a little bit about the hydraulically separated, uh, properties and exactly, because I was on the sidewalk and I don't remember curbs. Are there curbs there?
No. So the, the notion of a curb cut, I believe, is just conflating a new, a new piece of impervious, a new entrance.
It's two different things, right?
It is, but.
If you do a curb cutter, if you have curbs and they go in to catch basins and off to, you know, a spreader and they're treated in a certain way.
Yep.
Um, so, so basically this road, the water drains off the sides into these rain ditches and runs down the road to that, that detention pond.
Yeah, so, um, not to get too in the weeds here, give me, give me the hook if I put anyone to sleep, but, um.
Well, just snore loudly.
I'm a nerd, so.
There's, the, the subcatchment for Phase One of Heritage Estates, um, effectively, it's pretty convenient for, for our purposes here. It's effectively just the frontage of, of my client's property. There's a pretty large underdrained soil filter, I forget the gentleman's name, he's been here in the past, in the backyard of our northerly a butter. Um, I think it's Mr. Kavanaugh, hopefully, hopefully I have that right. There's a large underdrained soil filter that treats a significant portion of the northerly and later phases of the development. So there's a detention pond down here and really what that receives is, there's no curb, exactly like you said, um, impervious runoff that comes.
I have, I have the pointer. Jesus, what am I doing? Took me that long to realize it.
Impervious runoff from effectively just this thousand feet of Heritage Drive comes into, my hand is shaking and it's because I haven't eaten, not because I'm nervous, I promise, um, it comes into a roadside swale, a vegetated swale on the west side of the Heritage Drive right, right of way. So between the, the edge of impervious and my client's property line, um, flows southerly down into the detention pond here. There's a culverted crossing beneath Heritage Drive and then I believe there's another culverted crossing off the page here that goes beneath School Street. And as far as, I don't know why I put the pointer away, um, as far as the hydraulically separate comment, um, there we go. So there's a depression here. This is, this is a vegetated swale and the, the back edge of the swale, if you will, um, returning to existing grade effectively creates a berm that runs right along the property line. It, it might deviate. I'm not saying it's exactly there, but, um, everything east of the property line goes into that vegetated swale. Everything west of the property line falls down into these, the hat, the transparent hatch here.
The topography slopes away from the road.
Slops away from the road into the meadowed wetlands here, forested wetlands up here, and then it's, um, eventually crosses School Street. There's a culverted crossing right here and a separate one right here that both leave the property.
So in essence, I guess where I'm trying to go with this is I'm trying to really investigate from my, uh, understanding of this, what the impact on this, uh, on the, the stormwater treatment is. And it strikes me that the only real impact is the driveway crossings and those are going to have culverts, so it's not going to impact the water that, that goes there now all the time, but you will be creating a little bit more pervious surface, impervious surface with the driveways.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll have to demonstrate that those driveway culverts are adequately sized to provide no impacts to the existing subcatchment. But again, the, the notion that, um, you know, those are going to have to be gigantic crossings to, to accommodate some large contribution of upstream subcatchments, that's just not true. There's very little that, that is dedicated in this.
You know, the other, the other thing that was brought up was that the clearing of trees, obviously we all know, or some of us know that, you know, trees actually act as filter beds, natural filter beds and absorb the, the groundwater. Uh, but so, so because this property slopes away, when you clear those trees, the majority of that runoff should run to the back.
Any, you know, there, I'm not denying that there's going to be a change in, in cover type where those driveways connect to Heritage. That's absolutely true. But regarding the tree clearing itself, um, you know, what changes from, from forest to, to someone's lawn or someone's building envelope, the vast majority, 99% of those considerations is going to have to be with our stormwater management that we design onsite and that goes into the amendment that we're pursuing to the existing permit that's in hand for this parcel.
And so, sorry, I, I think we can move on to yours now. Paul?
I got one more question, then he can answer everybody. When we were on the sidewalk, I was there, there was talk because of so many new driveways going out.
Yep.
To possibly limiting it to one or two because you could come in behind and get into the property that way, just through one or two versus having six. I don't know if that was looked at or.
It was. Um, I can speak to that a little bit. So we are proposing, just because the, the grading isn't shown here, but this BMP, this detention area does take up a pretty considerable portion of Lot Six's frontage. There's going to have to be a shared driveway here for those two lots, five and six. Regarding anything else, um, really the limiting factor is, excuse me, um, your town's road design standards, specifically your minimum centerline radius. Even if I were to super elevate the road, it, it's, um, larger than basically any other town in the county that I'm aware of. So really in order to have a road that, because you're, you're proposing, I'm going to draw with the cursor here, you're proposing less curb cuts and have something come in and kind of.
Someone.
Yeah. Um, I think from, both from an infrastructure cost perspective and, um, this build out proposes no wetland impacts and because of this significant vernal pool, it's confirmed to be significant and it's gigantic, um, this entire wetland complex that's all connected is a wetland of special significance because of that critical terrestrial habitat. So there, the state would have a very large interest in not having any impacts to that, which is what we have here. I've taken a look at it. I think what we're proposing is, is the best combination of everything, um, whether or not that means I can look at shared driveways for all of these. We have, we have the pair here, maybe we do a pair for three and four, a pair for two and one. That's something I can look into, but as far as limiting the curb cuts and the way it was discussed at the sidewalk, I, I think what we have is still the better iteration.
Going from six to three would be better than having six.
Yep. Understood.
Okay.
Okay. Um, if I may.
Yes.
The, the last thing I had here, um, was regarding, actually no, a couple of comments from Ms. Maureen Nikitas?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so the, the first comment about, um, my client's willingness to have the development, be how, be conforming to, to the surrounding association, the existing association, absolutely. You know, I, I, um, mirror what, um, what my client said on the sidewalk. You know, I can always appreciate towns that don't require me to specifically put, um, driveway cuts and put specific, um, limitations or hindrances on where my building envelope has to be. You know, it, it's informed by the setbacks. So, you know, uh, Maureen kind of said it's kind of a moving target for what, um, what that looks like and, and what the association would, would be agreeable to, but, um, it's something that we want to do as well. We certainly don't want to put six cookie cutters here, so I, I hope just the confidence that's, that that's something that we have an interest in as well, um, is, is good enough for now and, you know, maybe if I can, once we get to final, um, and I can state this now, so hoping I'm not, I'm not held to it, if I can show maybe a proposed option for driveways for lot locations to, to give the variety with, with the acknowledgement that I'm not held to that. Irish.
I'm sorry, I was reading a message from Hannah.
If, if that's something that the town would be agreeable to, I'd be happy to do that with.
What are we being agreeable to?
If I prepare a mockup, if you will, once we get to final subdivision, that shows maybe a, a concept for the build out of the development, shows where driveways could go, where.
That would be very helpful, I think, to the board and the others.
I just don't want to be specifically held to those locations because I've been burned with a couple other towns in this county.
I think it's, I think it's a double edged sword because, you know, you raise a good point, Jerry, that, you know, um, and as one of the, the neighbors raised was that, you know, having three driveways is better than having six, but I cringe at the thought of sharing a driveway with my neighbor.
Yes.
You know, I live on a private road now and I just maintain the road and all my neighbors fight over who's supposed to do it and I just do it. Uh, the equipment, I just do it. I don't, you know, I don't want to, I just don't want to participate in that, I don't have the energy for that. I, I deal with that enough at work. So, um, uh, so I, I, I'm appreciative of the suggestion of the shared driveways, but I understand both sides of that, that thing I'm talking about, you know, environmentally and, and, you know, from the aesthetics of the neighborhood, I think that three would look better than six or five, I guess you would be proposing, but I'm just not sure, you know.
Couple, couple mockups then, how about that?
I, I will.
So I understand both sides of that.
Can I, can I answer his question real quick?
Sure.
Just put mockup on it and I won't hold you to anything.
Water mark, the whole thing.
It's them that will potentially hold you to things. If it's a mockup, it's a mockup.
What we're all talking about. It may come down to when you get with the DEP, they may come up with something totally different and say.
Yeah. One of the.
Exactly.
Yep. One of the things that'll be at the forefront of their mind is minimization. So, yep.
The most important thing for me in this whole thing is you're going to have to, like you said, you're going to have to use DEPs, whatever they say. But as far as Maureen's concerned, and I know exactly what you're talking about, conforming to what's there now, and I believe our subdivision rules even have that in, in, you know, that's, that's the important piece here. Yeah, I, I agree. I think that that's more. Right. And I think that the neighbors would think that that was more, you know, if you had six houses that fit in the neighborhood with six driveways would be less offensive than three driveways with houses that didn't fit the neighborhood. I think if you had to choose one of the two, I would prefer to have houses that fit the neighborhood.
Okay. All, all fair comments. Last, last bit I had.
Back to me?
Nope, not quite yet. The, the last comment from Maureen, um, about, um, considerations for these proposed lots, should, should this development get approved, be incorporated into, uh, the association, the existing association? That's not something I can exclusively comment on right now. Um, that's obviously going to have to be, um, a group project. Her, her comment, um, about these first four lots not contributing, I, I did hear that as well on the sidewalk, so, um, yeah, I mean, what I can promise now is just that we're going to engage and end up where we end up. If it, if it makes sense to contribute, then we'd like to endeavor to try and if it doesn't, then that's where we'll end up.
I think maybe Irish, that's a, a good question for you, like if, you know, I, I have a little bit of experience with, um, existing homeowners associations and, um, I think that my general opinion is that, you know, if, if you guys could, uh, join that association amicably, I think that would be a great solution. Would help, you know, alleviate some of the burden of the other homeowners. But I'm not sure that we can require that as a planning board.
Um, so from my end of things, and here's something that I get a lot of, 75% of the angry comments I get from the public are about this. I cannot enforce anything with an HOA covenant.
Right.
HOA is civil. That is completely outside my bailiwick. I don't have to do that, I've got my hands full. That being said, I would like to propose just a little extra something that if this is approved by the board and even if there isn't something made to, um, because I hear what the others are saying, so even if the homes themselves don't become part of the HOA per se, whether or not you do an HOA with them, perhaps there can be some sort of annual payment towards the HOA fees put into the, the deeds or something, so that way it does offset the costs because now those people are utilizing what big a HOA is paying for. It's a suggestion that I was going to make privately.
Yeah, I think, I think this is one of those things where, you know, we seek, we seek the developer to, uh, work with the community that they're in and, you know, that, you know, and sometimes you can, sometimes you can't, you know, but sometimes those offsite agreements, uh, go a long way towards community, uh, you know, appreciation.
Yeah. Understood. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
That's all I've got.
I think right now, based on the public hearing, I think that, uh, there should be some discussion and maybe a motion for, um, a preliminary approval, uh, subject to conditions. So is there any comment on, on that?
I think, I think that that's exactly correct. I think that being that DEP is still a mystery player in the outcome, um, we need more information on that front and I assume that, um, you will be reaching out or they've been reached out to, or is there a question in front of them on a way forward?
Well, you've already met with them on Tuesday.
Met with them earlier this week and we scheduled a two week follow-up and I told them about where I was at in the approvals process and what I'm, what I'm hoped to be, what I hope to receive this evening. And yeah, once we get into final, then, you know, preparing those mockups, having the conversation about, um, the applicability of everything offsite and discussions on minimization onsite. So, yeah.
Yeah, and specifically, just to recap, the, the conversation that we had, um, was that, you know, the, these lots are going to create minimal impact to the existing stormwater plan. So, so I would like to see DEP answer the question of, is that the case?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Is this an insignificant impact on the current stormwater plan that's not attached to this? Right? So, you know, in other words, is this development causing harm or damage or excessive use or interfering in any way with the Clements' stormwater plan?
Yeah, oh, completely agree.
I'd like to see that and then also I'd like to hear, you know, from DEP, and I'm sure that, you know, if you have a stormwater permit already and this is going to be an amended plan for these lots to be treated, however that stormwater management plan is, I think the, the specific thing for me is that I would like to see DEP weigh in on if this is actually going to have a significant impact on Mr. Clements' stormwater management plan.
Yeah, I completely agree. You know, I, I need that answered.
I think that is the question.
Whichever side, sorry for interrupting you there. Whichever side it falls on, you know.
And then we'll have to see if there's a legal issue, as was brought up to us earlier, with DEP, you know, mandating that you change your, an existing plan that's already been approved for a different person.
Actually, that's for, that's for the two developers to handle that, it's not the planners' purview, yeah. So that's why you can.
I would like that settled prior to us saying amen.
Prior to final approval, for sure.
Well, what you guys should do then is you should be voting whether or not you want to approve the preliminary with any conditions and make the DEP information part of the conditions for them bringing final.
I agree. I think we should entertain a motion.
So before we do that, Paul, if I may, I just want to have a comment and then we can get to that part of it. And that is to, first of all, thank Maureen for standing up and saying something for your community because that's why we have public hearings and thank you for coming. I know it's not always easy. I have learned that, and it's become painfully clear, that land use ordinances are the guidelines that we must follow. And while we would love to be able to say, make sure that one house is green and one is blue and put a pine tree over here and a maple tree over there, we simply can't do that. We just make sure that what you're proposing fits our land use ordinances. And having said that, though, this is the opportunity for developers to meet with the Butters and, and other concerned folk and work amicably towards a satisfactory condition on both sides. And it sounds to me like your client is willing to do that, which I'm glad to hear. And I also agree that tonight, we are only working on preliminary, eight point one does only apply for final and we will make sure that that is satisfied when we get to final. We're not there yet. So tonight, having heard what I've heard, I'm comfortable in making a motion that we approve the preliminary application with the condition that DEP comes up with a final decision on how stormwater is to be managed, providing this development gets finalized.
Any second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passed.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the discussion.
All right, moving on, on our agenda, we have final plan and condition use, major subdivision, Norman Court, R forty-three, Lot twenty, Civil Consultants, conditional use.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Evening, Board. My name is Neil Raposa with Silica Consultants, on behalf of Norman Court LLC. This project has not changed materially since the last time it's, it was presented here. Per the request and the preliminary condition, we did have a biologist come out and prepare a report regarding the spice bush that were present on site that, as Ellis located on site. That report did come back and it's, it should be in your packets. The results of that basically stated that there were spice bush in the locations that were noted in the comments and they were in poor condition due to the invasive species that are prevalent on the site and that the recommended action, if possible, would be to plant, replant those spice bushes down further, closer to the, closer to the brook here to ensure their, well, make their survival a little more reasonable. Beyond that, the only, the only item that is outstanding is the sewer district, working with Underwood Engineers. We just got their comments this afternoon, their final comments to address those. Most of those were fairly superficial details, things like that, but nothing that would change the layout of the project. So beyond that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
You say superficial. Give me an example, please.
There's, I don't have it because I just got an email on the way over.
Oh, you just had.
But it's, most of it was, they were just trying to get information from us as to why we routed some things a certain way, that one of the details they wanted changed a little bit, just to reduce some that's on, shown in the detail, things like that. And that, those are things we'll all work with, work with Jay and Underwood to get those cleared up. An email Jay said this should be something that could be handled with the conditions.
And I can speak to that because I was copied on that email and Jay Wheeler from the Sewer Department does say in his email that he would be one hundred percent comfortable if the board decides to vote on this tonight, if they just make it a condition that they approve it. Obviously, if you don't approve it, it becomes a non-issue, but if you approve it, he'd like to see it as a condition that the developer will work with the sewer district to iron out the details. Pretty much, long, long and short of his verbiage, pretty close to his verbiage.
Yep, pretty much.
Thank you.
So I, I read the report on the spice bush situation and it, it did appear to me as though what they did find for the plant wasn't a healthy population in the area that is of concern, that there is more healthy populations elsewhere and that in essence, trying to change what's there was going to actually cause more damage than good to, with the invasive species in regards to that taking the spice bush down. So I'm comfortable, the way I understand it, is that it was addressed, it was looked at, it doesn't have, in my opinion, a large enough negative impact on potential habitat for the butterfly, for that one plant, as does the rest of the population which is unaffected.
Correct, yes. We did.
That's how I wrote it as well.
We did, we did add a note to the plan, just, just, just to highlight it, that, that the spice bushes that are found there should be replanted and.
That was going to be my question. That was my next question.
Yeah. We did note them, we did note them on, on the updated plan, so it's, it's, it's basically right where Sarah had them on, on her, on her sketch there. One on the, on the single-family lot, then some that are just down, just down between the buildings here and then one on the area that's already meant to be, to be left undeveloped.
What, and you may have covered this in previous meetings, but where are we relatives to satisfying the Butters with some screening, vegetation, walls?
May I interject?
Yeah.
I was supposed to ask you guys at the beginning, but I'm trying to balance me, Terry, Hannah, over here. Did the board receive, they did receive in your packets, but did you get an opportunity to read the three Butters' comments that were in the packet?
I did.
Okay, so you don't need me to read them into comment, they are aware. So for those listening, this is, I asked the questions of the people who know more than me and they said that it would be not appropriate for me to be reading them outside of public hearing, but to make sure that the board did receive them, if the board wishes, I can read them into record, but they are in record, they will remain with the development file forever and they are also online. So is everybody comfortable with that?
I am and I did read them and to summarize from my own understanding as well, I, the Butters have concerns about looking at another construction site for some more time after having just gone through a couple of years with one behind them. And I understand that. And I also heard from them that their line of sight is impacted, they're hoping for a thick enough buffer to prevent line of sight and I'll kind of refer back to my original comment on the last project, which is providing it meets the land use ordinances, we can't necessarily say, we need you to put up a twenty-foot wall and make sure it's green on one side and blue on the other. I think that the, the attempt by your client to put up some screening at all is a step in the right direction and, you know, we hope for a satisfactory result from the Butters, but it's not actually a requirement by you to do so.
And I think, I think, I mean, the developers, he wants to make sure that it's, you know, it looks good on both sides, so it's, it's, it's one of those things where he's, he may be, you know, beautifying it to, to help our development and in turn it's going to be, you know, an assistance to the, to the abutting properties in their view. I know it's on one side of it, on this portion here, it was mentioned before that this lot does have a large undisturbed buffer for that wetland to protect that wetland, so that will just continue to grow between here and this, and the other, and the other adjacent houses. And that's a similar situation here where there's a wetland on the abutting property that will also assist in kind of maintaining that vegetated separation there.
Was there, and I, I may be totally on the wrong project here, but was there some added information on regards to crosswalks and sidewalks and lighting that has come up?
We got that.
I did read a report on that.
We did receive some recommendations from Dean Williams of SMPDC and the town's official stance on it is that they would like, we would like to see the developer work with Public Works for traffic calming measures. The, the town manager and the, the town manager and the Public Works are supportive of these, but feel it would be inappropriate for the board to determine whether the developer's doing X, Y, and Z or the town is doing X, Y, and Z, so we would just ask that the developer get together with Jody from the Highway Department and, and figure out what we're going to do to make sure the kiddos don't get crushed going to the library.
And on, for our part, at least on the site, you know, that, that we control the development on here, we did extend that, that sidewalk down to the right of way. We'd originally left it off because there was no, was no crosswalk or any sidewalk to get there and it also helped out with, with the drainage area here, having that sidewalk removed, but adding that back in, it just, it required another catch basin and just a little more infrastructure there to get the, make sure we get the stormwater out and not cause any, any issues at that intersection, but that's something that, you know, we're happy to do and help the town out with, once they come through and, and work with the developer and any possible future improvements to that, to the public right of mind there.
Okay. That being said, I would like to make a motion to, do the final approval on this project here for Norman Court.
Is there a second?
I know I'm not allowed to talk, but our letters were sent.
And I, I already stated that I was told, I was told that it's inappropriate to read them outside of the public hearing portion because it was closed, but they were provided with copies and they all stated that they've read them, so we have to let the board do their work.
We were told they would be.
And I'm sorry you were, were told incorrectly, but they were provided to the board, that's why I asked them and asked them if they had read them or needed me to read them. So they all acknowledged that they had received them and read them, so that's really honestly a little bit more than we're supposed to do after public comments have been heard, but we want to make sure you guys were heard by the board, so. Mr. Ganarelli, your motion, were there conditions on that motion?
No.
There should be. There's a condition for.
Working with Sewerage, working with the.
Working with the Sewer Department.
Yeah.
And also working with the town for the crossing, right?
Well.
Two conditions.
That, working with Public Works for traffic calming and working with.
Is that a condition that I can?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Those are conditions for the, the board to determine if they wanted to add. I just need to know if I'm putting them in there or not.
Do, do we have a threshold for how that would be satisfied as far as working with the, working with Public Works?
When Jody looks at me and says, "Yeah, they came in, they talked with me," then you've been working with Public Works. So if he's mad, I, I, trust me, when he's mad, I, I will know it, so.
I'm just hesitant with the ones who can't just deliver and say, "Here it is."
You know what, we fully understand that, and part of the reason, and this will probably help the board to know as well, part of the reason why in the discussions it was not deemed correct for the board to either put a condition that the developer do certain things or a condition that the town will do certain things, being that, I mean, realistically speaking, could the board try and push the issue of the developer doing everything? They could probably try, he could probably fight, I don't know where the chips have balled, but realistically speaking, when Jody's mad, I know about it and I don't want to step on his toes, so I would rather not have you guys playing in his road without his permission, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, we do want to, you did add the pieces on the parcel that is actually owned by the developer, which is what we would have pushed for them to require if you hadn't already done.
Restate the motion. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve this with two conditions. One, that the Sewer Department and the changes they, they suggested be made and satisfied and two, that the traffic issues are discussed with our Public Works Department.
And would you, would you want a note on the plan, just referring to discussions with Public Works or?
Please.
Yes.
You mean, what?
As far as.
Note on the plan.
You want to just put a note on the plan that improvements at.
Yeah. Offsite, offsite improvements will be worked with Public Works, will be fine.
Yeah, just a note.
Can I just say something? I'm really sorry, but at the last meeting, you said that for the final approval, you were going to also put a condition regarding.
I have to go to the public.
I don't know if you remember that.
Anybody speaking from the public has to be, A, acknowledged by the chair and B, at the podium. Nobody at home can hear anybody that's speaking from the audience, it's just background and stuff.
You'd like to come up and say, say a very brief word into the microphone? We'll hear you.
I do.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I, at the last meeting on October seventh or fifth, when you, you gave preliminary approval with a spice bush biologist condition, you also said that when you were going to do the final approval, you would put a, you were, at that time, you would talk about the pesticide minimizing pesticide use condition for final, that was, you would say you were going to hold off on that until the final approval, but you were going to.
Yes.
Consider that because of the, our wetland downstream.
Thank you.
Did we get your name?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Name and address, please.
Yeah, sorry, Lorraine Cooley, Abutter, ninety-eight Old Pine Hill Road.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley.
I do remember the discussion on that. Thank you for actually bringing that up.
Thank you.
So I guess I would ask you, sir, what if any points would your client be willing to make on pesticides and such?
We don't have any plans on using any pesticide there. You know, looking at the biologist's report, there are some invasive species.
Right.
We're going to pile that bloom up into a pile and it's going to sit there for a year before we do anything with it. You know, then maybe we'll grow some on the top, but for the most part, it should be, it should all just decompose inside that pile, but we have, we have zero interest in using any pesticides.
And to the, to the other end of that, the, if you actually read, nerd here, if you actually read the, the report from Mark, he says that the invasive species are, that are there, which interestingly enough, did not find Japanese knotweed in the area of development. However, he found a lot of the other typical, your typical nightmare weeds that we have around here and he states that they're so, so far gone because the land's been undeveloped for so long that pesticide use would not benefit. There's no real eradication, I mean, short of blowtorching the entire thing, which we don't want to do, there's nothing that's going to get rid of everything there, so I would. So I would not foresee them attempting, it would be good money after bad if they tried to do any pesticide, herbicide, anything. There's nothing there that's going to be beneficial in the use of that. So I can't see them wasting money, but.
No, I don't think there's a, an appropriate condition for that.
I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's a performance standard you can tie it to anyways, because you can't make conditions, you can't tie to the ordinance.
Yeah. I, I think we're good enough here, and we have some confidence in the developer that Morty tells us is going to be accurate. And if it isn't, well, we'll find out later and work on that.
I'm certainly not licensed to apply pesticides.
Right.
I certainly wouldn't be doing it.
And, and were there pesticides to be used for some strange, crazy reason, you would have consultations with the abutters, wouldn't you?
Well, I don't know about that. I don't, I just don't see this as an issue. I mean, I, I've never used pesticides on the site in my life.
Okay.
Never been an issue. We cut the trees down, we pull the stumps out, and we bulldoze the pile up, and that sits and decomposes. I mean, I can't even envision a scenario where I would use pesticides.
Okay.
I'm less concerned about pesticides than herbicides, but we do agree that the report shows that you're not going to, you've, you've kind of reaped no benefit from it, so you're not going to do it, right?
I don't have chemicals. I don't, I just can't. I've never, I've never seen any chemicals on the site. There may, but.
As a former developer in Georgia, I did two subdivisions, and we used no pesticides, period. Because again, I wasn't licensed to apply them, and they would, that would have had to been approved by the state of Georgia. So I didn't, there, I feel no need to, because you're already tearing up the land to do what you need to do.
Do we have a second on the motion as it is? Do you want to repeat it?
That was a bad look. Sorry.
I, I make a motion to, for final approval of Norman Court with the following conditions. One, that we satisfy all of the sewer department issues that they've requested. And condition two, that we talk to Public Works about the traffic issues, you know, of speed control and things of that nature on the, on the, on the main road there.
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, who, who, who seconded?
I did.
Jerry.
Okay.
You do know who made the motion, right?
I think it might have been Don. I'm not entirely sure.
It was a group effort.
Yes, it was. That's correct. Thank you.
Okay, next we move on. Findings of fact for major subdivision, Goodrich Farms.
Can I interrupt again?
Sure.
I was asked by Hannah if you guys could please, the only one that you're going to be able to vote on based on who is here is Goodrich Farms. So they would like you to bump SolTage up because Alex is on Zoom, their representative, and we'd like to be able to shake him loose.
Sure.
So.
Let's do that. We'll move down to.
Can we?
To SolTage. So findings of fact for conditional use, SolTage Solar Project.
Stand your request.
R-00-7-4, extension request.
So that has to, you guys can't vote on that, so you need to officially table it to the next.
So that, that will be tabled.
Because that one needs to have, and actually, listen up, young ears. We will need, hold on. Mike, Jerry, Paul, and Don all to be present for SolTage. And because Mike is not here, you guys cannot. But you guys.
We need the motion and second that table, or is he okay just to table it?
Yeah.
I think, I think he's okay just to table it.
Yeah, just kidding.
So Alex, thank you for your time. You're, you're cut loose.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now you can resume the normal order of things.
Okay, so we're going back to major subdivision, Goodrich Farms, R-40, Lot 4, Zone R-3, Durant and Diamond Hill Road, Altus Engineering.
Just finding, findings of facts.
Just approval of the finding of facts, guys. So did you all get a chance to read them?
I did.
Yes.
Huh?
I did.
You did.
I did. So I didn't see any issues in the finding of facts for this project, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept the findings of fact for Goodrich Farms subdivision.
And I will second that motion.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Okay.
Motion passes.
All right.
Okay, that's Goodrich. We're not doing Woodland Pond.
Woodland Pond, we, we didn't get those with enough time. Well, we had that, we got them, but we only got them like a day and a half or two days ago, and we did not feel it was sufficient time for the board, given how contentious that got at times. We wanted to make sure you guys had your full week to review, so that will go on the next one.
Thank you.
Also, based on who's here tonight, you wouldn't have been able to vote on them anyway, so.
Way to kill my fun, Hannah. I was trying to look like, I was trying to look like the good guy for once.
Thanks, Hannah.
For once. I almost had that sewn up.
All right, moving along. Finding of facts for major subdivision, Worcester Road.
Guess what?
R-3217-E, Zone R-2, Providential Equity Development LLC, findings of fact.
You guys have to table that one too, because there were not, there are not four of you here that were there that voted to approve that plan, correct?
I was here.
Yes.
Who else?
I think most of us were here.
Nope.
I don't remember.
I looked up the minutes. That was August 17th, and I believe not everybody was here.
No.
Yeah, I don't think that was on August 17th.
So we'll just table that one to the next one.
How could we have approved it?
Well, because.
The people who, the people who were here were here to approve it then, but they're not here.
They're not here.
We don't have, we don't have four people that were here that day that are here today. So Mike and Phil taking vacation.
So, so we will.
So on August 17th, Mike, Rick, Les, Phil, and Jerry were present.
Yeah.
So we need four of them.
So we needed a Mike or a Phil?
Less. You have three.
Mike and Phil. Mike and Phil are missing.
You have three.
Mike and, Mike or Phil.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's.
No, we're seven. All right, that's tabled, I guess.
Yep. That is, that is tabled. Last thing, we have land use ordinance amendments.
Hi. So we have.
We're speaking to that.
We have a couple of things. First of all, you all got the email I sent you that showed the exhibits you're voting on that you had requested, Jerry?
Yep.
Okay. Make sure you all received that. If not, I have one copy. I could have made copies with. We have received the following. Mrs. Jack said that she felt it would be beneficial to have an open forum and discuss the ordinances envisioned, rather than to read a very long document and try and articulate input. But I do believe, if I recall what Terry told me correctly, she's actually going to join the comp committee, which is the better place for that. And we've already discussed, as a board, you guys discussed the, how this has to go in order for it to make sense. And then Theodore Hallett, Teddy Hallett says, "Some lighting on or around Lyman Street would be wonderful. It's always so dark as soon as the sun goes down." And it appears that that's all we've received from, thus far. We have actually, I made a video with, with BCM Terry, and she got that up in live. We did that Monday, and I think she went live with it either Monday or Tuesday. We've got, and Vision Berwick is putting information up for the fact that we are soliciting public comment on their newsletter. We've got it posted in the town hall. We've got it on the website. The library has graciously allowed us a little square of their table at the voting. Although we'd hoped to get together some sort of informal poll, that might be something the board, sorry, Terry, that might be something the board wishes to design for next year, that we could hold some sort of informal poll or do a Survey Monkey or something. There's just not enough time, enough manpower right now to get that together for this November 7th election. But the Berwick, oh God, I should know this, the committee that deals with the aging population. Somebody throw me a bone.
Life time.
Berwick for a lifetime. Thank you. You helped me. Berwick for a lifetime is, they're going to have the same flyers that we have posted in the town hall and that we have linked on the website on their table at the election. So we're getting the word out, and I think the fact that we've even got two comments shows that, you know, people are hopefully paying attention.
So this, this was what we agreed to do at the end of the meeting, so that we could maybe suggest land use ordinance amendments?
You missed that whole thing. You were in Florida. I'm so sorry.
I was in Italy, but I wasn't, no, I wasn't.
Florence, Italy, maybe both.
Yeah. Or Greece.
Does anybody have a suitcase that'll fit? Anyways.
No, I, I was here for that. I just.
So the land use ordinance amendments will appear on the agenda pretty much from now until forever, with the hope that if we have a super busy agenda, we can just slide it right off and on to the next one. However, what we're hoping for is that, we're hoping to receive, and for those of you at home listening, or a couple of you still here, we want to get whatever suggestions, any ideas, what we want to know what people are happy with, what people would like to see changed, not just those that, the, the hope is to get ahead of things, rather than people only caring about the land use ordinances when it's in their backyard.
And I, I was here. I got a pretty strong reprimand from a woman when I said that, you know, our job as volunteers was to, you know, enforce the land use ordinance, and she made it clear to me that my job was also to recommend changes to the land use ordinance. So.
Your, your job as a Berwick citizen is to recommend land use ordinance. My, and as a planning board member, what we would like to see you do is, we would like for all of you on the planning board to read through the subdivision ordinances, see if they're, see any, those haven't been updated in some time. We would like those of you serving that have to work with this particular portion of the document to review that specifically and suggest any changes. But as a resident, yeah, if you have suggestions. And, and as a planning board, if there's anything you guys are hearing repeatedly on, comments from the public here at the meetings, you're welcome to turn that into a potential amendment, something to address. But no, it's not.
Can I, can I go on?
No. Yes, yes, you may.
That was a long way to answer, yes, we're going to discuss land use ordinances. The, one of the things that I wanted to suggest that we look at, and you could help us with this, is that in North Berwick, there is, they have some village overlay districts.
We have one too.
Specifically, they have a Village C overlay district, which changes the density requirements for multifamily housing. And I think with the housing crunch that we have now, if we had some of those potential districts in town, like I know in North Berwick, the stretch of road, Route 9 at Hanafridge is on for a distance, and then like 100 feet off of the road is Village C, and that changes the density requirements, if I'm not mistaken, from whatever that is in that zone, if it's 20,000 square feet to 2,500 square feet for, per apartment. So if you're going to do an apartment building in certain zones where it makes sense, you don't have to have 25 acres to put 10 apartments if it's, you know, a downtown or village overlay district. And I, I just think that if we could take a look at that and see if any of those overlay districts make sense to us, I think it's worth discussing.
So you, this stupid question, just for clarity, so we're all operating on the same page. You've read our village overlay requirements, yes?
Do we have something like that?
We have a village overlay district.
Reduces the amount of density required for an apartment building?
Yes, we have.
And is, is that beyond just the tannery site?
It is a.
Yeah, there's a, there's a map.
Yeah, it's not.
It was right before you came on, last, we were talking about it. There was a map that showed.
Yeah.
And we extended it for one or two applicants that were up on the road.
It's basically a very large portion of this. There are, the thing is, is there have been some individual requests to amend the village overlay and expand it. If I'm understanding what you're saying correctly, what you'd like to see is perhaps that same type of village overlay density type of thing put in other locales throughout town, rather than just downtown.
Potentially, yeah. And I'll, I'll read that village overlay district that you're talking about. I, I was under the impression that that was basically just for the tannery site.
It's not just the tannery site. It is specified, and Hannah, you can pipe in if you prefer, but I keep forgetting you're up there.
So I guess the short answer is no, I did not read that village overlay district.
Way to go, Les. Well, that's not in the subdivision regulations, for what that's worth. So it's 6.4. I think I gave you guys both the regular and the, so it's 6.4 is the village overlay To promote the development of the former tannery site, which is bounded by Sullivan Street, Wilson and School, the establishment of village overlay district condition.
It goes up to like Logan Street and then back down, essentially all the way to the river. But mostly bound by Sullivan and School, up to Logan and down the river is essentially where it is.
Thank you, Hannah.
So I would suggest, if that's something you're looking at potentially proposing to the board for other areas of town, two things that I would ask. One, obviously, where. And two, because the village overlay has so many various criteria, if that's something the board wishes to address, I would suggest that you determine what, if you guys want to just, A, take this village overlay district and propose that you pop sections of it here, there, or wherever, or if you want to take portions of that current ordinance and either add, subtract, change other portions and make it another overlay district. So that way you guys come into it with a distinct.
Yeah, that's probably because, you know, I know, I know that the village overlay district for the tannery site specifically was written very, you know, what the buildings look like, what they feel like, you know. I think it was a, it was a very thorough job on that. And I, I think that, you know, like in North Berwick, they have Village A, Village B, and Village C. And each of those have different requirements. So, you know, like in, if, you wouldn't have to take all of those ordinances that are, that were built for the tannery site and apply them to Wilson Street or, you know, you get my point? That, you know, maybe that might be worth looking at, because, you know, we have some areas that have a fair amount of multifamily housing. And I think that, you know, that a lot of the multifamily housing was built to support the tannery. So much like the tannery, that housing is outdated. It's, you know, old, no insulation in the walls, you know. And if, if, like as a developer myself, if I could buy one of those properties and tear it down and, you know, in the place of a three-unit building, build a six-unit building that's new, green solution, you know, reduce the carbon footprint, I think that, you know, and that's just one example, but I think that, you know, that's, it's worth looking at in some of these, some of these areas. And I think in North Berwick, it's primarily on like on Route 9, and then on Lebanon Road, and then I think on Main Street. So they have very specific, just like certain spots. And like I say, it's 100 feet off of that road on both sides for, you know, a half a mile or whatever it is.
As your, as your code enforcement officer, I will tell you, there are a number of, I mean, New England is like, I think we're probably at about 85%. I haven't checked the numbers in a while. About 85% of our housing stock, particularly for multifamilies, was pre-75. So you're talking problems. I've already had a couple that have been, that I've, I've had several in town just over the last year. I've had to mark as unsafe. So the older buildings, the older multifamilies are a problem as far as structural safety, if they've not been maintained over 150 years consistently.
And the people that live there, I mean, you know, the, the old windows, no insulation. I mean, I had an old multifamily, and there was literally newspaper stuffed in the walls.
Yeah.
So I can't even imagine what people were paying for heat and utilities on that, you know.
Yeah. And, and well, that, whether or not you freeze to death plays into safety and comfort, but it's more than just comfort, is there is the safety concern.
So I will, I will do some more research. I will do some more research on North Berwick's land use ordinance in the, the village overlay districts, and maybe come up with some suggestions for the next meeting.
Good idea.
So I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is a good example of how changes happen for land use ordinance in the town of Berwick, and maybe other towns as well. There is a need for, or a suggestion of a change, and some legwork is done to come forward with a proposal of a change. It is then brought forward to the appropriate place. It might be the planning board, who then turns it into a suggestion to the select board. It may be the surveys that are going on out there as an appropriate place. I don't think fighting on Facebook is the right place to have that discussion.
Please, no.
But if people put their energy into coming up with an idea for a change and bringing it to the appropriate place, it does take some time. This isn't an instant overnight gratification thing. And you need to get it in front of the town's voters to approve it. We can't just make the decision. The select board can't just make the decision. It goes to the town voters to decide whether it passes or not and makes the change. Is that close?
Yes, that's actually very good. So...
Actually, the way it's supposed to happen.
And that's why I stated that it will be on, and it really should be on pretty much every board's, every planning board's agendas consistently, is land use ordinance amendments, just in case anything's brought up, somebody, a board member or otherwise thinks of something. So for this round, and this is something that we've, that I tried to make clear in the video I did, but I don't think I had enough coffee for that video, but Terry from BCM is amazing and made it look good, so it's good. But this particular round, we are taking public comment up till December 14th. That being said, we're taking comment all the time from the public. To the planning department, drop it at the office, send us an email, we'll get it out to the board. That being said, I, I specify that because if it's not received by December 14th, it does not give the board time for the planning board sitting here to make their changes, amendments, get their document together, and get it to the select board in time to make it on the ballot. However, anything received after December 14th just becomes the next go-round of what we might want to do. And every...
Why is December 14 significant?
So we, what we did was Patty and Terry and I sat down, and we had a conversation, Patty being the town clerk. There are very specific guidelines that the town clerk has to follow in every municipality. The town clerks have to follow in deadlines they have to hit in order to make things happen for ballots, for votes. If we don't hit these dates, potentially, it could go as far as Patty getting fined. And we can't be doing that. We can't be dragging our feet and causing issues for other employees in town. So in order, we started with the, the date that, we started at the end. This is, this is the end date for when everything has to happen, and then this step has to happen this far in advance. So then this step has to happen this far in advance. So December 14th, if we take comment till December 14th, that gives you guys having all of the potential items to consider for that next meeting, the first meeting in January.
For the May ballot.
Yep, to, so that you can, we can do that, advertise the public hearing, because, you know, we have to have a public hearing for this. And, and then you guys can get your stuff together, get it to the select board. It gives the select board their timeframes that they need, that Patty's already stated, they have to have their stuff done by XYZ dates. So December 14th was not...
So December 14th is the deadline for suggestions for the land use amendment for the May...
For this round of, yeah, June.
June, the June.
For this, for this June's ballot, yes. And then anything received after December 14th will still be presented to the board after we, so December 14th will be the date that we take, and then we, you guys will get the last of them at the last meeting after December 14th at the next meeting. Anything we receive after December 14th, we are going to hold back unless it's, you know, adjacent to something that's already there. If it's similar to something that's already there, we'll just include it in with. So for example, say, if we're talking chalk drawings on the sidewalk, and then somebody else is saying, well, you know, colors of chalk drawings on the sidewalk, just to throw something ridiculous out there. We, we would combine those because they're similar. But anything that's completely different, we'll hold back until you guys get your document together and send it along to select board. And once you guys have kind of passed that baton for next June's meeting, then we will present you guys with anything we've received from that December 15th date to, to start working on the following ballot.
Okay.
So we won't be holding them for very long, just a couple of weeks, so that we're not throwing new things at you while you're finalizing a document that needs to go to the select board.
That makes sense.
But you guys will ultimately receive all of them. We're just trying to do it in as organized of a way as possible that makes sense. And I just don't want, I don't want the public hearing the December 14th deadline and thinking that's like, that's the drop-dead date for us for June's election. It's not the drop-dead date for a land use...
For us to consider a land use ordinance change.
Yeah.
And, and then, like you say, people could add comments to that land use ordinance change that may, you know, steer us in a direction or another direction. But other issues are tabled until we get our stuff submitted to the select board.
Yes, and then...
And nothing is ready for the ballot until the select board votes on it.
Yes, it goes from...
They're, they're the final...
We just suggest it to the select board, right?
It goes to you guys, it goes through you guys, the select board, and the town attorney before it gets put on a ballot. So there's a lot of other steps that people may not see happening. We've also been trying to encourage people to join the comp committee because, again, for the benefit of those at home that may not watch that video that I did, kind of working backwards here. Planning board makes your decisions based on the land use ordinances. The land use ordinances come about by either things that are changed by main law, that we have to include, like this ADU thing that's on the ballot now, by suggestions made to the public, such as those that I read out to you guys tonight that will be emailed to you and, and part of the next things for you to consider. But the bulk of the land use ordinance is derived from the comp plan. The comp plan steers the direction the town wants to go. Land use ordinances are designed to make the town go in that direction, and then we can suggest changes to it as it, as it goes, as we grow to close loopholes, to open up new avenues, to put restrictions on things, or remove restrictions from things. But comp plan starts everything, so people are welcome to join the comp plan committee as well. But as far as current land use ordinances, if you know the ordinance that you want to suggest a change to the board, call it out. If not, you can just, things as simple as what I read into the record tonight work. We just want to hear from the public and from you board members.
Okay, so moving along.
No, moving along.
If we're done with that, is there any new business to come before the board?
Nope, I don't have anything else in there.
Is there any public comment on issues not on agendas before the board?
No.
Are there any informational items that we have not talked about?
Already beaten to death?
No.
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 Then I will enter into motion to adjourn.
Second it.
All those in favor?